Hey everybody, welcome to our Kingdom Roads Bible Study. Um, our intimacy series here on Luke, the book of Luke. Um, today we're studying Luke chapter five. And we're very excited to get in the word today and I'm glad to have you back with us once again. Um, let's get started with the word of prayer. Father God, we thank you so much and give you all the praise, all the glory, all the honor. God, you are so good, you are amazing. Lord, there's nobody like you and there's no one who can move mountains like you. There's no one that can, that can change a circumstance from zero to everything, Father God, but you can. And we, we just give you all the praise and we thank you for allowing us to be in your presence at this very moment. Father, we have asked that you forgive us of all of our sins and all of our shortcomings, God. And that we ask that you take um, control for us, Father, that you would step in for us. Father, that you would be everything that we can't be at this very moment and help us to understand your word. Father, we ask that your Holy Spirit come upon me and come upon those who are listening at this very moment to understand what exactly it is that you have for us in this study. I ask that you uh, give us the understanding and the application necessary. And we pray all these things, in Jesus' name we pray, amen. Alright, so let's get started, we're going into Luke chapter five. So, the intimacy series that we did last week was on identity. Um, and we talked about who we are in Christ. And sometimes our identity is challenged by our circumstances and where we are. And we also studied the beginning of the ministry of Jesus Christ. And at this moment, we're going to be studying uh, it's the title I see here in the, in the scripture says, "Four fishermen called as disciples." So Luke chapter five starts off, and I'll read the first verse. Stephanie, if you're available, feel free to chime in at any time. Verse five says, "So it was at the multitude, as the multitude pressed about him to hear the word of God, that he stood by the lake of Jessarat, Genesarat." Sorry if I messed that, that up. "And saw two boats standing by the lake, but the fishermen had gone from them and were watch, washing their nets." So we're here in a scene where a few men are basically, they're um, actually Jesus actually sees two boats standing by the lake. But the fishermen had gone from them and were washing their nets. So basically, this is the moment where Jesus is going to meet his disciples. And then he got into one of the boats, which was Simon's. And asked him to put out a little from the land. And he sat down and taught the multitudes from the boat. So here Simon is, and he is inside of this boat and a man just comes into his boat. And literally just sits there and then begins to teach the people. What an honor for Peter. And this is the beginning of the, the call on his life. And verse four says, "And when he had stopped speaking, he said to Simon, 'Launch out into the deep and let down your nets for a catch.'" So not only is this man that Simon doesn't know getting into his boat. Imagine you have a boat or you have, you know, something that you're sitting in that, that you own. And the, a stranger just jumps into it, then they start teaching people. You don't know this person and now they're telling you what to do. And Jesus is telling Simon to launch out into the deep. To go into the river and let his nets down for a catch. So, how would you guys feel? Uh, Stephanie, are you on? How would you feel and you're in a moment and a stranger comes up to you and tells you, doesn't know you from anything and tells you that, what to do? Now it's giving you a command, "Launch out into the deep and let down your nets for a catch."
I'm gonna think that person's kinda crazy.
Yeah, we're gonna think this person is a little cuckoo for cocoa puffs, like what are you doing? Exactly. So verse five says, "But Simon answered and said to him, 'Master.'" Whoa, we gotta stop right there. Right then and there, Simon answers him and calls him master. So what we're thinking isn't even what Peter is thinking. He already knows to call him a master, a teacher. And I'm guessing, the, the beautiful thing is that Jesus made it known of who he was just by getting into his boat. When Jesus got into the boat, Jesus began to teach. He didn't just sit in a boat, he just made it known and he did what he, what he does. You know, he did his specialty, he started to teach. And so immediately, Simon had to look at him and be like, whoa, this man. You know, he's just stepped into my life, he's just made a big move. And right now, you know, this guy, he's gotta be my, he's a, he's, I might as well call him master. You know, so Jesus made it known who he was and that's why Simon could answer him and say that. So he goes, "Master, we have toiled all night and caught nothing. Nevertheless, at your word, I will let down the net." So Peter is like, "We've been, you know, fishing all this time, we were never able to catch anything and now you're telling us to catch and go out, go out and catch fish, really?" And he, but Peter's being obedient. You know, he's matching his uh, I, like the, the, the label he put on Jesus, he's matching that to what Jesus commanded. I think that's really amazing because sometimes we call Jesus the Lord of our lives or we call him master. We call him teacher, but we're not allowing him to let us, you know, if he tells us what to do, we're not jumping at it. We're more so like, we're skeptical. Like I know myself, sometimes when God tells me to do something, I'm like, wait, why you want me to do that? I'm asking questions. But here Peter is, Peter doesn't even know this man, but he already knows the authority on this man. And he says, "Nevertheless, at your word, I will let down the net, I will do what you said." We could learn from Peter, I know I can. Um, and when they had done this, they caught a great number of fish. Hmm, so not only did they obey him, but what he said brought, brought back provision. It brought exactly what they were looking for. So in the obedience came provision, in the obedience came favor, and the obedience came everything that he needed at that moment. And verse seven says, "So they signaled to their partners in the other boat to come and help them." Wow, so Peter's catch was so big, Stephanie. I can't help but laugh right now. So the catch right now, it was so big that Peter had to get his partners in the boat to come and help them. Wow. Yes, the calling is huge. But imagine if Peter would have been like, "I'm not going, I'm good, thanks, I don't want it." "I'm not feeling that, nah, I already, I did this like fifty times already, it don't work, I'm not going." What if Peter would have said that? And so, they can't, go ahead, you trying to say something?
Oh, yeah, I was trying to say, you know, he would have said that, he would have known, basically he would have missed his blessing.
Wow, he would have missed out on his blessing if he didn't answer the call. If he didn't obey.
Yep.
Wow. So verse um, seven finish off, it finishes off and it says, "And they came and filled both the boats so that they began to sink." Mercy, they filled the, both of the boats. It was so heavy that now these boats are starting to sink. That's how heavy, that's how large your blessing is when you obey God. That is so, that is so amazing that once we take that step and that call to obedience, whatever God is calling us to do, whatever, whatever it is that he has at that moment. If we just step out on faith, then we would receive everything and then some. So at this time, if God is calling us to do something and we're just sitting back and we're not doing it, and I'll be honest with y'all, the Lord is calling me to something right now and I've been like, no. You know, and I've, I'm, it's very, very hard, but to see that the Lord is even using this study at this very moment to let us know that if you just listen to me, that whatever I have for you will blow your mind. And it's bigger than what you actually think it is. It's so much bigger, oh my gosh, I can't help but smile, this is amazing, God, I hear you. And so, verse eight, "When Simon Peter saw it, he fell down at Jesus' knees, saying, 'Depart from me, for I am a sinful man, O Lord.'" So now Jesus is recognizing who he is. Why is this man in my boat? Why are you trying to bless me? Who am I that you would bless me? I think sometimes that's our, our, our thought sometimes is that, you know, when God gives us a call or when he's coming into our lives or he's just trying to come in, we just recognize how foolish we really are. Once God is in our lives, we start recognizing who we really are. With, you know, and he comes in and he's saying, "I'm a sinful man, you, you shouldn't be, I shouldn't be in your presence." Wow. And I, and I think, yeah, but the thing about that, if you think about it, is Peter at this moment too is, he's almost, he's telling Jesus to leave him. But think about it, the, if you just went through something like that, shouldn't you be following somebody like that?
Yeah.
So it's like, I, you know, once we, we recognize the danger sometimes in recognizing who we really are is that we won't want to, you know, pursue what it is that God has or we won't wanna pursue God because we think we're just so ineligible. Because we think that we're not good enough, we're, we don't fit the bill. Wow. "And for he and all who were with him were astonished." So every, not even just him, but everybody around him was astonished at the catch of fish which they had taken. And so, also were James and John, the sons of Zebedee, who are partners with, with Simon. So now his partners were like, whoa. So there's some of your friends, there's some people in your circle that are gonna see the blessing that you get once you meet Jesus and they're gonna be like, whoa. And Jesus said to Simon, "Do not be afraid. From now on, you will catch men." Wow. Jesus just changed his uh, he just changed his job. Jesus, wow. Peter was a fisherman before, you know, he, I'm sure he was, he was doing a great job with that, he was comfortable in it. And, you know, it, it was a part of him, it became a part of him and now Jesus is saying, "Don't be afraid, it's alright, I know you've seen all these things, but recognize that I'm changing you up a little bit." He didn't necessarily change who he was, he didn't change, he didn't change necessarily what he was doing because he was gonna be catching. The skill was still gonna be needed that he learned already. But he was going to do it to draw something else, to pull other people in. He was gonna be catching men. So, in intimacy with Christ, he will not change who you essentially, he will change you to magnify you and make you bigger than what you currently are, he will take you to another level. He will not, he will use all of the skills that you already had and make you something bigger and better. He won't make you forget the skills that you learned. He's gonna use everything that you already were learning, everything that you were going through, every moment that you've gone through, every, every inch of your failures, your past, your, you know, all the things that were glitz and glam and even the things that were just so ugly. He's using all of these things to bring you to your potential. And he tells Peter his potential before it even comes about. He's telling him he's gonna catch men, and this is the calling. When God comes to us with a calling, it, it is always something that you're not currently doing. And it may blow us away. And so when they had verse eleven, "When they had brought their boats to the land, they forsuk all and followed him." So Peter and the three other guys, these men left everything. They forsuk all, they left everything behind and followed Jesus. Everything. Everything they knew, they left their families, they left their jobs, they left their friends. They left everything that was so dear to them and followed Jesus to where Jesus was calling them. Wow. That was heavy, don't you think Steph?
Yeah, that's deep.
Yeah, man, this was deep. Are you ready to read yet?
Lord.
Are you ready to read yet, you still driving?
Uh, I'm just about to get through.
Okay, let me know when you're ready to read, I'm gonna keep reading.
Okay, good.
Okay, so verse twelve says, guys, "Jesus cleanses a leper," this is where we're going into. And verse twelve says, "And it happened when he was in a certain city, that behold, a man who was full of leprosy saw Jesus. And he fell on his face and implored him, saying, 'Lord, if you are willing, you can make me well.' Then he put out his hand and touched him, saying, 'I am willing, be cleansed.' Immediately the leprosy left him." Wow, what a, what an interesting thing to see that this man, he understood how, and there's a verse that I read today, I can't remember where I found it, but it was a, it said, "If, if the Lord hears us and we pray and we ask for his will, he hears us. If he hears us asking for his will, he will hear our prayer." And here this guy is saying, "Lord, if you're willing." And he was, it's like saying, "I'm okay with you not doing it, but as long as you're willing. I want this really, really bad, but it's up to you, it's really up to you. Do you really wanna help me right now? Is this really what you want me to do? Do you want me to live with this?" He was asking, "Are you willing? Is this something that, is this something that I have to live with for the rest of my life? It's up to you, if, if you want me to live with this sickness for the rest of my life, if you're willing." That took, I'm sure that took a lot of strength for him to say because it, it came from a place of, of understanding who God really is.
And being able to trust him.
Yeah.
Even if he doesn't know anyone, wow.
He's, he said, "Lord, if you are willing, you can make me clean." And Jesus said, "I'm willing," and cleansed him. "Immediately the leprosy left him. And he charged him to tell no one, but go and show yourself to the priests and make an offering for your cleansing as a testimony to them, just as Moses commanded. However, the report went around concerning him all the more, and great multitudes came together to hear and to be healed by him of their infirmities." So because of this healing, you know, this went out and all these people found out about it. And multitudes started coming and they gathered to hear more about Jesus. And then they wanted to be healed by him of their own issues. So he himself often withdrew into the wilderness and prayed. So Jesus himself, this verse is saying that Jesus would withdraw into the wilderness and pray. That's something that we could follow as well. If we're trying to get to know Jesus, you know, we see that he kept going back into the wilderness 'cause we know that in Luke chapter four, Jesus was in the wilderness just for solitude, just to be able to get closer to Jesus, wow. To get closer back to his father, he went back to the wilderness again, just to search God's presence. He went right back into the wilderness where it was difficult, where it was painful, where it was empty, where he needed, where there was, he needed something, you know, he was in need. He didn't stay in a place of provision, he went back to the wilderness just to go and seek God's face and pray. And he withdrew. So there's gonna be moments where we have to go back into God's presence to be able to continue because we know that this was just a portion, maybe even the beginning of Jesus' ministry. And he was still going back into the wilderness just to get more information from his father, more understanding, more wisdom, more of his love, more of their communication and their back and forth. He had to go back. And he was dependent on God. And so he would go back into a de, a desert, a wilderness, just to get that. Are we that desperate for God? Mercy, help us. Verse seventeen, "Now it happened on a certain day, as he was teaching, that there were Pharisees and teachers of the law sitting by, who had come out of every town of Galilee, Judea, and Jerusalem. And the power of the Lord was present to heal them. Then behold, men brought on a bed a man who was paralyzed, whom they sought to bring in and lay before him. And when they could not find how they might bring him in because of the crowd, they went up on the house-top and let him down with his bed through the tiling into the midst before Jesus." And so, at this time, there's a man, he's a paralytic and his friends wanna bring um, him to Jesus so that he can get healed. But every avenue, once they got there, they couldn't get in, it was too crowded. And they're trying to figure out, well, we need to get him to Jesus. They were determined to bring their friend to Jesus just so that he could get healing. And so, they went on the house-top and let him down with his bed through the tiling into the midst before Jesus. So imagine it's a house, you know, and Jesus is preaching and then he sees a bed coming down from the ceiling. These people were determined, that's what you call faith, 'cause they was going after the healing. And verse twenty says, "And when he saw their faith, he said to him, 'Man, your sins are forgiven you.' And the scribes and the Pharisees began to reason, saying, 'Who is this who speaks blasphemies? Who can forgive sins but God alone?'" But when Jesus perceived their thoughts, he answered and said to them, "Why are you reasoning in your hearts? Which is easier to say, your sins are forgiven you or to say, rise up and walk?" And so, these men who were under the authority of the enemy understand that they were discussing within themselves, who is this? It's interesting that when we were studying um, uh, Luke chapter four and we saw that Jesus was in the wilderness and the enemy was questioning and saying, "If you are the son of God." And here you are, this is how you can determine, guys, when you hear the enemy talking. Because these people are saying, "Who is this? Who speaks blasphemies? Who is this? Who can for sin, forgive sins but God alone?" Jesus had the authority to do what he was doing. But here, the enemy once again is using, now he's not, it's not him himself, now he's within these people and he's questioning who Jesus is. And so, Jesus perceived their thoughts, understand that the enemy, he's always coming at thoughts. And so Jesus perceived it because Jesus can read thoughts. He answered and said to them, "Why are you reasoning in your hearts?" And he puts them in their place and says, "Is it easier for me to forgive their sins or is it easier for me to say, rise up and walk?" In his state that they were trying to understand him in. And um, verse twenty-four says, "But that you may know that the Son of Man has power on earth to forgive sins." So now he's telling them who he is. He said, "The Son of Man has power on earth to forgive sins." He said to the man who was paralyzed, "I say to you, arise, take up your bed and go to your house." So he not only told them what he was about to do prior and these past couple of verses, he actually told the man, "Now get up, rise up, pick up your bed and walk." Immediately, he rose up before them, took up what he had been laying on and departed to his own house glorifying God. So what this man was searching for, what this man was waiting on, he got it because of his faith. And he was glorifying God afterwards. So when we are in intimacy with Christ, when we go seeking after him, our faith is desperate to go after him. Our faith is saying, "Man, this man can do anything, he can bring in a, a two boats load of fish. He can heal someone who has leprosy. So he has to be able to do something for me." There's something that we all have in our lives right now that we need God to intervene in. But the Lord wants to see, how bad do you want it? Are we just gonna sit and settle for where we are right now, be comfortable in our situation? Or are we gonna go find some friends that are willing to carry us, who are really willing to um, push us? Who are willing to, to be in our corner and pray with us and fast with us so that we can receive what God has for us? And verse twenty-six, "And they were all amazed. And they glorified God and were filled with fear, saying, 'We have been, we have seen strange things today.'" These people were saying, "They just saw strange things today," and they were glorifying God because they were so amazed. And this just came to my mind, and I understand that when you're in God's uh, when, when God has called you out or if you're in a situation where things are just difficult and, you know, everything that, you're going through a moment of loss, a, a moment of diff, difficulty. Things that used to be so easy just aren't easy anymore. You may be losing things and you may be in a desolate situation. You may be extremely in despair. And all the people that you've known have left you and they're gone. But there are some people out there that are willing to help you get to your promise. Whatever God has for you, you've got to have a good surrounding around you. Are there people that are gonna help you get to that place? Sometimes we need friends, we need people in our corner that are praying, that are spiritual, that believe in God, that are willing to go to the mountaintop, that are gonna go to the top of the house with you and drag you down just so you can get your blessing. Today, in your intimacy, figure out who's in your corner and who's not. Because there might be a blessing that God has for you that your friends have to help you pick up. Your environment, the people that are around you, are they willing to, to sacrifice themselves and their strength and their sleep just so you can receive what God has for you? What's your community looking like today? Who are your friends? Let's keep going. Verse twenty-seven, "And after all these things, he went out and saw a tax collector." Guys, this is my favorite story, if people know me, you know I love the, this story. "After these things, they, he went out and saw a tax collector named Levi, sitting at the tax office, and he said to him, 'Follow me.'" Stephanie, you heard that?
Yep.
Jesus walks up to Peter, I mean, excuse me, I just love Peter's name for some reason right now. Jesus walks up to Matthew, AKA Levi, okay? And he's a tax collector, which the Jews don't like. The Jews don't like him. And Jesus walks up to him and says, "Follow me." He didn't ask him no questions, he knew who he was, he just walked to him and said, "Follow me." And verse twenty-eight says, "So he left all." He left how many things, Stephanie?
All.
All. He left everything, rose up and followed him. "And then Levi gave him a great feast in his own house. And there were a great number of tax collectors and others who sat down with him." So Jesus was sitting down with what type of peoples?
Tax collectors.
And, and the, and this time, exactly. What type of people were tax collectors back then?
Crooked people.
Crooked. Crooked is true. Yes, they, people looked at them like they were crooked, like they were cheaters, like they were liars. They didn't trust them, they could not be trusted. And, and here Jesus goes to a tax collector and tells him to follow him. And he goes to his house. And there was a great number of tax collectors. And now it's a, it's a big old party of tax collectors that Jesus is hanging out with. Okay? And verse thirty says, "And their scribes and the Pharisees complained against his disciples, saying, 'Why do you eat and drink with tax collectors and sinners?'" So now they're questioning, now this is the enemy again. Now the enemy is questioning Jesus's job. The whole purpose of Jesus even being here, the enemy is questioning and saying, why are you hanging with these people? These people are crooked, they're sinners, he's accusing them, and saying that these people are not worthy to be in the presence of Jesus right now. And Jesus answered and said to them, you, you got a Bible, you wanna read that one? Yes. Wow, that's deep. That's me too, that is my favorite part too, but the beautiful part about this. I'm thinking about it in even our situation, because sometimes. We think that to go to church, or to be in the presence of God, or to even pray. We need to already have our life together. We even think when Jesus says, hey, come follow me, that you need to have your life together. Right, we're thinking that we have to be perfect, we're thinking that we have to be holy, remember, let's go back to the beginning of the chapter. Peter was saying, depart from me, Lord, because I'm a sinner. And that's, he was telling Jesus to get out of his presence, because he was a sinner. And here, Jesus is, honestly, I feel like this was the response that Jesus didn't give him. Right here, verse thirty-two, it says, I have not come to call the righteous. Jesus doesn't call the righteous. So, when Jesus calls us to something, when he's giving us the task. When he's telling us, when he's calling us to do great things, when he's calling us to do these, you know. Mind-blowing jobs, or mind-blowing, uh, dreams, or plans, or whatever he has. Or even in that moment when he's calling us to do something, he doesn't come to people that are righteous. It's in his word. He doesn't come to people that are perfect, he calls to people that are sinners, that are going to repentance. His job, Jesus's job on this earth, my brothers and my sisters, in this intimacy journey, you do not need to be perfect. You do not, to be in a relationship with Jesus Christ, you do not need to be, you don't need to have all your eggs, or all your. All your stuff in a row, all you need to be is yourself, and let Jesus do the rest. We don't need anything but God. Once he steps in, that's all we need, his grace is sufficient for us to carry out everything that we need to do. And how beautiful of a thing that Jesus wants to be with messed up, wretched old people like us. He just wants to be with us, he came, he says he, he didn't come for people who don't need a physician, he is the doctor. He wants people that are sick, demented, twisted, sinful, can't get it right. Keeps messing up, people that keep making the same mistakes over and over and over again, that just can't seem to get it, he wants us. That got me excited, and praise the Lord that our God would want to be in the midst of us. We don't have it together, yes, but he wants to be with us. And if nobody else wants to be with imperfect us, at least Jesus wants us, praise God. Jesus is questioned about fasting, so verse thirty-three, and this is where we're closing out today. Uh, Steph, you wanna keep reading? So then they said to him, why do the disciples of John fast often? So, at this time. These, the people are asking, why do the, the, the disciples of John fast a lot? And then they pray, and likewise, those are the Pharisees, but yours eat and drink. So, John's, John the Baptist's, uh, disciples, they were fasting, they were praying a lot. And so Jesus's disciples, they would eat and they would drink. So people didn't understand why both of these people are, you know, people from God. And then you have these people doing different things, this is like two different crowds, two different parties, what's going on? Go ahead and read verse thirty-four. So, essentially, Jesus is saying to them, they're celebrating because they're with me. They're at the reception right now. They're in rejoice, they're in celebration, so can you make them fast while they're with someone who's being celebrated? Go ahead and read thirty-five. And you can see also here the difference, and he kind of, he basically answers them and says. John the Baptist's disciples recognize that John is gonna be taken away, so that's the reason why they're praying and they're fasting. Their, their leader is leaving them, so that's why they're going through that. And then you have, um. And now he's explaining, well, I'm still with them and I'm here with them, so they can celebrate, and that's what he's a- asking and saying to them. And he's also saying that he is going to not be here, and at that moment, then they will fast. And verse thirty-six says, then he spoke a parable to them, go ahead and read the parable. Go ahead, go ahead.
And no one puts new wine into old wineskin, for else the new wine will burst the wineskin. Spilled, and the wineskin will be ruined.
Keep going. Hmm, wow. That, that's a deep one, so. Essentially, what do you think they're trying to say? Let's, let, what do you think, after you just read that, how do you feel?
It's like, I'm thinking of it as though, you know, with the whole us thinking that we have to be perfect, and you know, the cup of God. The way I took it as like. You're, you know, you still have your mess, and you're trying to like, put new things on the cover of your mess, like. You know, and it's, uh, like, just come as you are, old you, new you, whichever one, and you know, he's still. Like, I still love you either way, that's what I'm taking as the last part, the old is better.
Right. I also, I feel like he's trying to say. That we need to focus more on being utilized. If we focus more on being used by him, then we'll be okay. And I think the outer, the garment, a cup, a wineskin, is more so him. And. If we look at the fruit. Like, like he's saying that the wine that's being placed within the wineskin, so like, when we are in Jesus Christ. The wine that comes out of us is great. And I also understand from this parable, that we have to let go of the old us. Like, we have to let go of who we used to be, not in the sense where we don't remember what God used to do. But to forget who we were, and understand that God has something better for us. It says, no one having drunk old wine immediately desires the new. For he says the old is better, so the old in our sense is we are better, the way that we are. And the way that we are is what God can use, is what he can work with. I strongly take from that parable that God is trying to tell us, that we have to let go, and let God. Embrace what he has for us, let go of what used to be. Embrace the comfort, uh, 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 not, embrace the comfort of knowing that he's with us, and let go of the comfort of where we currently are. Because if, I, I've said this a lot in our studies in the past, you know, if we're comfortable, then God is already calling us out. If we can't let go, then you already know that God is trying to tell you, it's time to go, it's ti- it's time to move. And we cannot grow unless we allow the Lord to work within us. And allow us to go to different places. We don't, we don't become unless we move. Unless we grow, unless we go through pain, unless we go through a process, we can't become anything. Do you guys wanna share anything or any questions before we end out with this study?
Kinda say like, yeah, I definitely agree with like, we have to move, because. If that's the case, like, if you're hurt, or if you, you know, you've gone through something and you don't move, you're just stuck in that. Position the whole time, and you know, like. God can, you know, help you, but if you're not trying to also seek him and move towards him. So you're just gonna always be stuck in that position, so you're gonna be stuck in your depression, you're gonna be stuck in your sadness. You know, without moving forward and leaning on him. To change you.
Yeah, it's very important that we look to the cross, that we keep our eyes fixed upon Jesus, that. I think the, the issue sometimes is that we look so, all the time we just keep looking at ourselves. I know personally, that's what I go through, is that I always look at myself. You know, and I look at my circumstances mainly. I look at the surrounding, uh, factors and everything that has to play, like I look at the stakeholders, you know, it's all the things that I learned. Um, from, from, you know, education wise, and just, you know, how you grow in society, you just look at variables. And you, you try to make sense of things, but what I've learned about God is that nothing makes sense with him, nothing. It's not gonna ever make sense in the natural, but in the supernatural, in the spiritual realm. As you continue to grow and you walk with God, and you see the amazing and mind-blowing things, you see red seas being split open. And so, I've, I, I'm coming to recognize, recognize this. But I think what we have to do tonight, guys, in recognizing our intimacy moments. Is that we have to not look at ourselves, don't look at yourself as the, the end-all, be-all. Understand that, yes, this is who you are, but this is not who you're always going to be. That there's more to you, there's more to us, there's more to who God has called us to, to be, and there's something that he's called us to do that we've got to do. Whatever it is at this very moment, that God is calling us to do, we have got to step out on faith and go and move. Alright, any prayer requests for tonight?
Just like with the last place, so like, to step out on faith, to trust him to, you know. To work in me. So I can, you know, be alike to others.
Anyone else have prayer requests? You said not focusing on you? Anyone else have prayer requests? Alright, yes, no? Alright, let's go ahead and pray. Father God, we give you all the praise, all the glory, and all the honor, Lord, I just, I just magnify your name. And I just thank you so much for being a God who sees potential, who sees the best in us. Who sees the amazing future that we have, and Lord, you know everything, you know our, our past, our present, and our future. And our past me, doesn't mean anything to you. And we just thank you for being that kind of friend, that we can be that intimate enough with you to recognize that. Everything that we used to be doesn't matter, that we can come to you as we are, and that you would do a miraculous change in us, Lord. Father, at this very time, we recognize all of our issues and all of our, our deficiencies, Lord, and. We recognize that we not, we need not ever to look at ourselves, but to always trust in you, to trust your perfect plan. To believe that whatever we're going through right now is for our best, and that your grace is sufficient for us, that all we need is your grace. That all we need to look on is you, and know how much you love us, and how much you would never leave us or never forsake us, that in every moment, you're always with us. Father, we, at this mo- at this moment, we pray for Stephanie, Lord, who's asking that you help her, Lord, in her faith. Father, I hel- I pray that you would provide everything necessary for her to become who you have called her to be, Lord. We ask that you grace her, that you fill her up with your Holy Spirit, and that you continue to use her. Father, and that you help her to trust you and everything, and to help both of us, Father, not to look at our circumstances, not to look at what we see, Father. But that we walk by faith and not by sight. Help us, Lord, help all of our listeners, our viewers, anyone, God, who is going through a moment right now, where you're calling them out. Where you're telling them to go somewhere, Lord, where you, where it doesn't make any sense, it doesn't make any sense what you're trying to do right now. But Father, I pray that you would give us all the strength and the courage to trust you, and to step out in the water and to walk by faith. We pray and we thank you in advance for all of these things, in Jesus's name we pray, amen. Alright, everybody, thanks so much for joining us tonight, um, I hope this was a blessing. I hope that you are able to do whatever it is that God is calling you to do right now, and understand that. In this intimacy process, you're not alone, Jesus is always with you, and his grace is sufficient, have a great night.